Welcome to the third annual candidate forum sponsored by Roche Kappa Social Studies Honor Society. My name is Andrew Harshbarger. I am the co-president of Roche Kappa and I will be moderating the forum tonight. Assisting me in asking questions this evening are Roche Kappa co-president Griffin Myers and member Raleigh Gannon. Assisting us with the timekeeping are Ben Weston, Dominic Hall, and Logan Walter. We welcome the candidates attending this evening. Chris Adsett, who is running for the Heartland Lakeside seat. Lindsay Wood, who is running for the Northlake seat. Lynn Blaget, who is running for the Stonebank seat. And Tony Agnello, who is running for the Northlake seat. To ensure a positive and successful evening, we have a few guidelines for audience members and candidates. Each candidate will begin with a three-minute introduction followed by questions and a one-minute and thirty-second closing statement. Four questions will have a two-minute time limit while the remaining questions will have a one-minute time limit. Candidates who speak over their allotted time will be cut off in order to ensure that we stay on time. And candidates will not be awarded time to rebut possible arguments made against them by another candidate in order to keep on time. The order of candidates' placement in the chairs was decided randomly and will dictate when candidates answer questions. We will start over there by Mrs. Wood, then end with Mr. Agnello in reverse order for the following question. Since Roche Kappa is a student-run organization, all questions were created by honor of social studies students who are passionate about topics and issues related to our school. The audience is reminded that the forum's purpose is informational and nonpartisan. The intent of the forum is not to support or oppose any candidate. We request that audience members be courteous and respectful of opinions that may differ from theirs. And we also ask that the audience please refrain from applause as this decreases the amount of time candidates will have to answer questions. We will now begin with our introductions. All candidates will have three minutes to respond and give a brief introduction about themselves. We will begin with Mrs. Wood.
Hi, my name, can everybody hear me okay? Okay, well first. Hello? My time didn't start yet, right? Cool, okay. Hi, I just want to thank the Roche Kappa National Honor Society students for putting this on. I know events can be very challenging and often difficult, so thank you so much for the time that you've spent pulling this together. My name is Lindsay Wood and I represent currently the Northlake seat. I am part of the Personnel, Policy, and Curriculum Committees. I've been a lifelong resident in Heartland and I'm a proud AHS grad. I have two children, Mackenzie, who is a current freshman here at Arrowhead, and my youngest daughter Riley, who is at our Northlake feeder school. Why I'm running, I'm very passionate about ensuring every student receives a quality education and I do understand the challenges and the opportunities that our school currently faces along with our education system in general. I have twenty years' work experience as a communication professional, although public speaking can be very challenging. I also have background in working for profit and not-for-profit, which gives that greater depth of grant writing from the nonprofit sector to communication across global enterprises. I've also served on the Marquette University Dejre College of Communication Alumni Association as a past president, where I was able to establish standards for our mentorship program along with our scholarship program alongside esteemed colleagues. And in my campaign, I'm focused on four priorities, and that is curriculum enhancement, policy development, community engagement, and school safety and security. I'm also passionate about creating a supportive environment that fosters academic excellence, encourages innovation, and prepares our students for the future. And I remain committed to working collaboratively with our educators, parents, and members of our community to enhance the educational experience for all students in our district. I'm really looking forward to tonight, and thank you again so much for the opportunity to open.
Alright. My name is Lynn Blaget. As I say, I am serving currently as the Stonebank seat. Three years ago, I did run for the Northlake seats and ended up moving within district. And so I was able to come back on and serve as I was appointed this last December. I do have two kids that come here. I've got a senior and a sophomore, and that's originally why I ended up getting involved. My kids went to Northlake and as they are making the transition here, was asking some questions. And previously in my professional life, I ended up working through some not-for-profits, did some time at the Capitol and worked through some policies that way. So when the opportunity came up, I put my name in and ended up getting the Northlake seat at that time. One of the reasons why I'm continuing to run is I feel like the last three years, we've made a lot of changes and we've been seeing a lot of positive outcomes with that. And I'm really excited about continuing those processes in order to keep Arrowhead awesome, so thank you very much.
I can't sit when it's a long question. My name is Chris Adsett. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the opportunity for us as well to be able to address you and share a little bit about ourselves. So I am currently on the board. I'm an incumbent and I sit in the Heartland Lakeside seat. I'm also on the Heartland Lakeside school board, so I have a sickness. I love serving on school boards. And how I ended up here is actually for Arrowhead. I moved here in 2020 in March. Now what happened in 2020 March?
COVID.
Right, and it was at that point that I learned that Arrowhead was a union, not a unified district. I did not know that. So when I moved here, I started freaking out. What district did I just move into? So I got involved with Heartland Lakeside. I started going to the board meetings for a couple of years to see what is it all about? What is this district about? And then by natural affiliation, started getting a little involved here with Arrowhead. I would come to meetings occasionally if it was something that I was interested in or thought was very important. So that's how I got in. How I'm on the board is, like Lynn, I was appointed in October. There was an open seat and I thought, you know what, I'm very familiar with boards. I can jump right in and start helping. It takes six months to a year before you become effective as a board member. It really does. There's a lot to learn. And I knew I could help right away. Fortunately, I was able to. And after about two weeks, I realized, yes, I want to continue to do this. I love helping. I love helping. The other thing and the really important thing for me for being here and why I like to serve on two boards, our community is union. It's not unified. And I think that's a challenge because we have children that go from K through twelve with inconsistencies between districts and then also high school. And I think we can do better. I think we can do better. And it's really three Cs: cooperation, collaboration, and communication. And that hasn't really existed. And that's one of the reasons that myself, Kim Schubert, the president of the board, and Tiffany Hawley from Heartland Lakeside organized and put together an assembly of the different districts coming together to have a conversation in February. It's the first one in a long time, very overdue. But it gives us an opportunity to see where can we work together? Where can we have curriculum consistency? Where can we have collaboration? Where can we maybe have some shared services, things that might benefit taxpayers, whatever it might be? So those are one of the big reasons why I'm involved is I want to take, thank you. I want to take the experience from Heartland Lakeside and the experience here, bring them together and say, how can we really be better together? And that's what a board does. A board directs in policy, in behavior, in curriculum, and in people. So thank you for having us here tonight.
Hello? Alright, my name is Tony Agnello. I'm running for the Northlake seat. I've been a member of this community for, let's see here, probably twenty-seven years, twenty-six years. I've served this community as well. I was a volunteer firefighter for the Northlake Fire Department and for Stoneback Fire Department. I was also the first full-time career firefighter in this neighborhood when I was hired by Stoneback and I worked there full-time for several years. I've left the fire service due to health issues. I no longer have the health capacity to work that job, so I'm retired now. Other than that, I started paying attention to the board as my kids are now high school age. I have three kids. They're not all enrolled here. My kids are homeschooled. But we use Arrowhead for sports. We use Arrowhead for a couple of classes each semester. Where my daughter and my son takes. My son is also on the robotics team that Arrowhead has. So that's how we've become a lot more involved with this school. We are a lot more involved with the schools than we ever have been. We did a little bit of Northlake school when they were in that district, but nowhere near as much as we do now. And I started coming to board meetings because I have the time. And I saw some of the challenges that are being faced. And I feel our board is doing a really good job of addressing these and taking them as they come. And I don't have any issues with anybody currently on the board. I just feel it's an area I can help out. And that's something I miss and I can't fulfill those roles anymore because I'm unable to work a full-time job for my positions. But other than that, I can do a lot of stuff. I still have good memories, still am aware of what's going on in the district. And I have a sophomore and a freshman that had in school with a lot of other kids around here and see them. And are here three, four, or five days a week depending on what's going on. And they also play sports here. And I feel being involved is a very important point to this education that is one of the most important parts of your life and stemming the growth that will begin as you take the next steps in your life, which will be more independence than you have now as you proceed down that road of life.
We will now go on to the question round. For the next four questions, you have one minute to respond. Our first question is, over the past school year, there's been a push for classrooms to have a stricter cellphone policy. Do you believe it's working and/or would you change it? You have one minute to respond and we will begin with Mr. Agnello.
Being a little further remote from the school, I'm not completely aware how well your cellphone policy is working. But given the drumbeat to the rest of the world, I'm sure it's a struggle. I'm sure it's a struggle every day. And that's a big issue with phones and kids because you have multiple parties involved in this, you know, the administration. You have the teachers, you have the students and their parents. And unfortunately, one size fits all doesn't always work because some parents want to be able to get a hold of their kids. Some parents provide that stuff. That's a challenge we're going to have to face and we're going to have to address. And we need to make sure that for any reason, they are the least distraction to the learning environment as possible.
Okay, for the cellphone policy, I am in support of it. I think it's doing a good job. It's been in place now for a little bit. And the personal devices are distractions in the classroom during learning. So I think the policy itself is very good, but it really comes down to enforcement. And the administration shared with the current board not too long ago, the effects of better enforcement over the past year and the number of incidents have gone down as a result. So I think it's showing that it's working and that staff are overwhelmingly in support of it. Now what I will say and go on the record for, I am not a fan or in favor of a complete ban. And by that, I mean they should be allowed to have them here, but not on or use them in classrooms. And until we solve the issue with two campuses and that transportation in between, I feel like they have a right to have a personal device.
Alright, so. Alright, so I remember when we actually just started this discussion as a board. We started talking about what kind of policy did we even want in place? Did we want a full ban? What does it look like? And what it came down to was, there actually was a policy in place, but it wasn't being fulfilled on. So what we did was, we went back to administration and administration went and said, okay, let us put the procedures in place around this policy and figure out how this looks first before we go any further. And that's where Chris was just mentioning, we do get a quarterly update from our administration on how that is going. And the disruptions are going down in the classroom. So it is going in the right direction by having that policy and the procedure following suit with it. One thing that I do find interesting is our state legislation is talking about putting bans or more criteria around this. We're talking with some of our legislators. They're really all over the board on this. Some people do want a full ban. Other people are saying, each will go as they want, so.
I can echo Chris Adsett and Lynn's sentiments along with Tony in regards to it being one topic that is continually talked about. We did share their worst survey results shared and it seems as if the cellphone policy, technology policy is being enforced and used correctly. And we continue to do those updates quarterly. I also am in full support of a non-ban. I feel we need to empower our students and have them be responsible enough to make the decision of turning their cellphones off during their classroom as well as their wristwatches and things of that nature. There's more things than just a cellphone, so let's focus on empowerment.
Okay, our next question of the night, in the age of artificial intelligence being utilized to new extremes, what is your stance on AI usage in the classroom and do you believe the school should crack down on it more? You have one minute to respond and it will begin with Mrs. Wood.
So I feel like we're just starting to scratch the surface with AI. I work at a corporation and we are also, you know, exploring the ways of responsible AI and how it should be used in the workplace. And I also feel that that's the same for schools as well. I think that we should be working on creating policy around responsible AI and what that means to Arrowhead and our school in general, incorporating feedback from the community and the students, the teachers, the staff, and the administration. And actually, that is on our agenda topic for tomorrow at curriculum, so six forty-five. Come and join in that conversation.
I was actually going to say something very similar. Six thirty-five, if anyone wants to join us tomorrow morning. Our curriculum director is actually going to be talking to us about what things are currently looking like. And I agree, it's an evolving tool. So we've got to figure out how do we help embrace our students with it? And how do we talk about using it correctly? There's programs. WCCTC has a great one that's going on. Maybe there's some things that we can learn and glean from them as well as UWM and other colleges in the area, so that way we're setting up our students for success.
You ever hear of Google? When it came out, we thought it was going to change the world. It was going to ruin education. Well, we figured it out. AI is here to stay. It's a very, very powerful tool, but it can't replace critical thinking. It has to help it. It has to augment it. It's not going anywhere. And so our best approach is to learn how to integrate it, use it, and teach with it appropriately. Not only from the staff side, but also student usage. If we do not, if we do not, the disparity and the divide between those that have and those that do not, those that use it and those that do not, will continue to grow and we will have more problems. And so it's up to us to figure out how to use it responsibly. And that means maybe teaching differently. Presentations, audible, collaboration together. That is how you can then prove that students synthesize information and don't have AI write the paper for them.
That's one of the big issues or questions with AI is the amount of schoolwork it can complete. And that's going to be one of the biggest challenges. But like any of other challenges, you know, and some of what Chris said, you know, we had to learn how to deal with pagers. We had to learn how to deal with cellphones. We had to learn to deal with this tech every time a corner is turned in the world. And there's always going to be new tech. It improves at a ridiculous rate and it replicates a ridiculous rate. The AI we have now will not be the same AI that the freshmen have when they're seniors. It's just a situation where we have to pay attention to and make sure it's not abused like many of other things that have happened before. Cellphones, Stewie, communication, things like that.
Okay, so the next question we're going to have our candidates answer is, what is the role of the school board in supporting the mental health of students and staff? You're all going to have one minute to respond and we're going to start with Mr. Agnello.
No matter the organization, no matter your desired outcome, mental health of all your participants is always a very important thing. And a lot of times, people that are in crisis can't always speak for themselves. So it's really good thing to pay attention to everybody else, pay attention to your students, pay attention to your staff, and see where it is because we're at the front lines of dealing with those people and seeing with those people and how they interact. We're going to notice a lot of that stuff before many other people. And we can allow for intervention quickly and before problems become less manageable. That's one of the good things. We need to be aware and have pretty alert and know what to do when they start seeing these situations.
The role of the school board is to ensure that the staff and students have the resources and the programs necessary to support mental health. That's very important. We have to do that. We also have to remember that it starts with families and a community as well. So it has to complement that. It can't replace families and community as part of it. The other thing is, most, not most, but many mental health issues come from stress. And part of that can be the environment that we're in. It's high school. So if we can work on improving behavior, improving culture, improving environment, perhaps, perhaps, we can remove some of the mental stress and then deal with the actual cause, not just the problem. But as a board, our job is to make sure that policies and resources are available to the administration and the students and the staff.
I'm going to end up echoing a little bit of what Chris was saying, that I really feel like the board's responsibility is to understand what's going on in the environment within the school. And that comes out through our administration, through our staff, through our students. And from there, we've got to help develop the policies and make sure that we can help provide the resources for the administration, the parents, the students, and the community. It's really up to the administration then to develop those procedures and how we can best take care of the students here.
Yes, so definitely, a school board supporting the policy is really important and making sure that the resources are in place. Policy eighty-three ninety-five does a great job outlining the resources and services that we offer at Arrowhead High School. What I think is important from a school board is to ensure that that policy is being followed, that our school, staff, teachers, students know what the policy is about, and then having those resources readily available for students that may be in need. I also think more touchpoints perhaps with the school counselors may be beneficial because I know several students that have not connected with their school counselors. So just an idea, a solution to a potential problem that we can lean on.
Okay. Our next question is going to be, the college application process has gotten increasingly competitive over the last few years. How do you think Arrowhead can better market and prepare their students for selective universities? You're going to have one minute to respond and we will begin with Mrs. Wood.
So we can start by taking a proactive approach. If you peruse the Arrowhead website, and I'm sure the teachers and staff also have additional resources to the college application process, because there are several of those things already in place. But of course, we can continue to get better and offer more. I would focus on enhanced college counseling through our staff and our teachers. I would continue to encourage students to take advanced coursework, which we have a plethora of AP courses available. I would showcase our extracurricular involvement because beyond academics, you still have ideas and you're creative outside of that. And so to be able to highlight those in a respectful fashion. And then above all, just being able to effectively market, which I would then lean into our business and marketing students because they're smart and they've got smart instructors. So let's use them.
Alright, I'm going to try to go through my notes here really quick because I had a very long answer for this. So we have an amazing program here at Arrowhead for all the different AP classes and all the different areas that you can study within. Depending if you're going onto college, university, military, tech college, whatever your choice is, we really have a really in-depth list. I went to a high school that had less than a hundred kids per grade. So when I ended up coming here, I was just blown away by the courses as well as all the extracurriculars that you can end up getting your leadership capabilities in and develop yourself to be able to set yourself apart. The way I really look at this is, students here have a great opportunity to go down any path they really want if they decide to put the work into it and really follow their passions with it. And guess what? It's okay to change that passion partway through if you find out that that's not the right path for you. So really, I would say, take the time to explore and really put your heart into it and you'll go far.
So from a board's perspective, we have to continue to focus on academic rigor. There's no question about that. It's slipped over the years and we need to get it better. But it's not the only thing. It's not the only thing. Colleges are more often looking for well-rounded students, not just inflated GPAs. So that's also part of it. So the extracurriculars that Lynn mentioned are very, very important. Character development and leadership. Again, college applications are looking for that. And I also echo what Lindsay said with making sure that we have programs and counselors that can help perhaps with the application process. Now outside of that though, we still must not forget about those that aren't going to college and may be looking at something else. So whether that's workplace programs, internships, trade agreements, whatever it is, community outreach, business leaders, we have to prepare students. we have to prepare students for life outside of school. And so, some pathways are college and some are others, so we just have to be set up to make sure we're empowering them to be successful at anything.
I'm gonna really highlight a lot of stuff that these folks said, I don't wanna repeat a lot of it. One of the big things is, like what he was saying, is partnering with the community. There's so many things that could be done for late-term students, juniors and seniors, where they can get more credit and/or job credit for going out in field and working in their chosen fields, or fields they wanna explore as a career, by doing some of that stuff through the school. And that involves just staying in touch with the community and seeking out the opportunities that are there. There's a ton of different ways for the kids to get plugged in, it's way more than why I went to school, but the options are there, and we implore everybody to take the opportunities to find out what options they can succeed in.
Okay, so for our next four questions that we'll be asking, each candidate will have two minutes to respond. The first of those questions is going to be, how as a board member would you address the budget challenge Arrowhead is currently facing? So again, you'll have two minutes to respond, and we will begin with Mr. Agnello.
The budget challenge is not going away. Forecasted enrollment is gonna go down, there's just less kids coming around, and that's gonna impact the tax base that we get. Plus, if school choice, kids can go elsewhere. I don't think we're gonna be in a situation of losing a ton of students. You know, I gain a few, but I think that's gonna be more than that. I think more of the issue is gonna be the less money with decrease in enrollment. So we have to make sure we're planning how, which we are, and we're anticipating that so we can be dialed in when that comes, because if you don't cut your costs and do things before you have that, you have no options. Once you get to that point, that's your enrollment, that's what you're paid on, those kids are there for four years. Your enrollment doesn't usually change during the years, it's not like you have a large influx of students, so you gotta be prepared for what you're gonna get. And by being ahead of the ball on what we spend and what we do, we can stay in top of it.
So the key here is, what can we do as a board? What can you do as an independent board member? We have a great administration here, a great business office, Jeff Gross does an amazing job balancing the budget and doing what he can with what funds we have to work with. But what can we do? What can we directly affect? First, we are community members, we are not school educators, so we need to look at things from a top-level perspective and ask questions. We need to ask where the spending is going, where are our biggest bleeds, where is money going? And we have to maintain spending in the classroom, so we have to prioritize spending, so that's number one. Prioritize spending and then look for ways for efficiencies and question, question, question. The second thing that we can do as a board and as a board member, is you really have to work with your representatives, I can't sit, I'm sorry. You have to work with your representatives. And one of the reasons why I'm pushing for collaboration with the other districts, is we will be a lot more powerful and we'll have a greater voice if we're working with the feeder districts together. If I call up Capica and have a conversation with him, I am one person from one board. If I'm doing it as a collective of all the boards, we now have a little more power. So that's one thing. The state funding system is also somewhat broken, there's inequities in funding, and we need to lobby for that. Not just more money, but equal money. Look at what Milwaukee is paying, and look at their outcome versus Arrowhead. The last thing is equitable funding in other areas. Little did you know, perhaps, that special education funding for private schools is at 90% from the state. That is a very large part of our budget, they're getting 90%, our district is getting in the low 30s. So you can see, as a board member, what we can do, we work within the budget we have, we question, 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 and then we have to effectively lobby to try to change and fix the broken system.
All right, so, very similar. One of the things I appreciate about our board is, we've all got very diverse backgrounds and the strengths that we bring to it. With my background and my professional career, as I talked about before, I had gone to the Capitol and actually lobbied for interior design bill to be passed. So with learning that process and working with our lobbyists there, it was very natural for me to go to the Capitol and start talking to our representatives about our lovely financing for schoolwork, for schools. And the interesting part about the Arrowhead District is there's 17 different voting districts within our school district. So from that standpoint, now we're up to two Assembly and two Senators that oversee our school district. No longer is it only one and one. So now we've got four people that we can tap on, talk to, and continue to try to push that through. Lindsay and I actually just went to the Wisconsin Board Capitol Day, and we got an ear of a new member that actually is interested in changing this. Maybe it's because he's new and it's exciting, but as I say, we gotta keep his energy up with that. So as I say, we are continuing to have those conversations with our representatives, and we're gonna need all of your voices when it comes time for you guys to all write to your representatives, and again, it's all in numbers, and that's not just the board, but it's us also calling on you to be able to do that. In the meantime, we have need to be able to continue the balances. So it's, the biggest things there is, you know, we're looking at teachers' wages, the health insurance, and our building upkeep, so we're gonna have to continue to work with our administrators, and we've got a great business manager here where they keep on finding things or being able to look at things differently, and continue to ask questions and see what we can do to keep things going here. Thank you.
Yes, so this is a great question, and I do have to thank our administration and Jeff Gross as our business manager. He is amazing working with the budgets that they have to work on. I also have to say that the financial management of a school is one of the most intricate, difficult spaces that I've ever experienced, and I continue to educate myself on it because it is so incredibly complex. I would not ever count myself as a subject matter expert, but that is why we have such a strong board with their diverse backgrounds, to offer those key insights as board members. What I can tell you is that I will continue to review the district's financial statements, budget, and funding sources, along with my other board members, to identify areas where we can improve or potential savings. I echo Lynn, advocating for our school funding is a passion of mine. I actually got interested in the board in 2020, when all the shenanigans of COVID was happening, and in 2023, I started going to the Capitol to advocate for our funding resources. Our focus on our Capitol Day was special education funding and the need to increase it, along with our district meeting or exceeding our inflation rate. So yes, it is a concern, and I do believe that we're doing one heck of a job managing through the challenges, and it definitely takes a village, so, thank you.
Okay, so, our next question is going to be, aside from funding, what do you see as the most significant challenges facing the district in the next five to 10 years, and what are your plans to address them? So again, you'll have another two minutes to respond to this question, and we will begin with Mrs. Wood.
Oh, yay. Well, funding is critical, but challenges in enrollment, as Tony had said earlier, attracting and retaining talented staff and our infrastructure are equally vital for our district's long-term success. The board and administration can continue to address enrollment challenges by studying trends and data, which we do get shared, and then efforts can be made to highlight the district's strengths and ensure that our educational programs continue to meet diverse student needs, so that we can continue to make our community and our school appreciated and to draw attention and bring people in. Also, just enhancing our community engagement can really create more opportunities for outsiders to come in and see what kind of community that we have. Attracting and retaining our talented staff is a priority. As part of the personnel committee, it's important to advocate for regular reviews of salary skills, to making sure that we are remaining competitive amongst our surrounding schools. And then initiatives that provide ongoing professional development for our staff, so that they are continuing with the current trends and are aware of changes that are happening, so that they can be able to pivot in certain situations and understand what they're teaching and making, and increasing their skillset. And then, of course, our infrastructure. We really need to focus on making our school bright, welcoming, and attractive for incoming students and families that wanna be a part of our district, and that is something that I'd like to continue to focus on as well.
Okay, so, with the next five to 10 years, that's looking a long ways out. I've also been on the board now for three years, and I can see how much things have changed in what we've been doing already. One of the things that I don't think I would've expected you to say three years ago when I was on the board, is really looking at that collaboration within our district. To say that we really need to look at all of our feeder schools with our high school and how can we work more aligned together, and that's everything from looking at our education with what are the kids being taught through the K through eight, and then how are they coming into Arrowhead, to how can we collaborate around services between the schools, if there's things that we can contract together with, and really be able to focus on that more united community? That's gonna help us also be able to look at other programs and things differently than what we're looking at today. So to me, I see that as one of the bigger opportunities that we have here in our district, to really be able to have a little bit different perspective than what we're looking at today.
Well, I'm gonna start by saying I agree with Lynn. The opportunities with the other districts are key. One of my key challenges that I believe that we're gonna face is academic excellence. It really is. If you've looked at the trend where we've gone over the last nine years or so, it's not in the right direction. There are some things in place now that are turning that around, and we anticipate that to spin the other direction. So academic excellence. Working with the feeder districts will help, like Lynn said, because we can get sort of a curriculum consistency. We don't want kids coming here from different districts at different levels, learning different ways, being taught different things. That sets us up for failure. We need to be working more closely together, so I think that's one of the biggest challenges, curriculum alignment and that student journey from kindergarten through 12th. The other, because the question was not just one, is what Tony had mentioned earlier, and that's declining enrollment. So it's, I wrote it down, the National Centers for Education Statistics is anticipating a 4% decline across the country over the next 10 years from 2020 to 2030, and for Wisconsin specifically, about 3%, 3.1, in the next roughly 10 years. If you do the math with the current enrollment with where we're at today, that's a $760,000 per year decrease in funding. Now granted, it says aside from funding, but it's not aside from funding, you can't disconnect it from funding. So what can we do? That's the other part of the question, what can we do? We have to continue to do what Lindsay said, in having an environment that's welcoming, having policies in place that create a healthy environment, that people want to come to move into this district, be part of Arrowhead. One Arrowhead, one excellent, one excellent experience for their children, which will benefit our entire district. So we have to collaborate, communicate, and work together.
Well, one of the big ends with all of this is it goes by our model, simple as that. Everybody knows what that is, and when you have a model like that, people can expect things. So we have to prove to them that we are the excellence that we say we are, and we have to do that by being fluid. We can't sit still. This world is changing at a more rapid pace than it ever has before with technology, with other things. I mean, look at all the different stuff the kids are getting hit with, and you guys, on daily basis, the different stuff, different challenges. Couple of years ago, none of us would've sat here and talked about AI, now it's one of the biggest things we have to deal with. So it's about being fluid, it's about paying attention and being plugged in. So we're aware of these little things that come up and the big things that come up, before they encompass the whole school. And guess what? I'm not always gonna be plugged into what Chris is, I'm not always gonna be plugged into what Lindsay is, you know, or Lynn. We all have our different ends, and as a collaborative collection, we can bring that stuff in and work it through, because by ignoring those big distractions, it takes away from our job, which is education and the excellence. We want all our kids to be educated at that standard we've set, and we want that bar to be what it is, and it's very attainable. We should have to separate the chaff out of the air and allow us to have a focus on our mission.
Thank you very much. For our next question, how do you view the current relationship between the school board and the local community? How would you work to strengthen that bond moving forward? You'll have two minutes to respond, we will begin with Mr. Agnello.
I think we're in a rough spot right now, because you have a lot of community that's unsure about the trust level of the school board, whether that's a fair assessment by those people or not. That's one downside. We are a big target, we are the target for all the bad news, and people like to point at us without getting the facts. So that's one thing that's hard, is trying to have the correct image, because all it takes is one or two people, social media, and all this, and everybody's talking about it. But it's making sure that those don't rule our roofs, and that's not who we are. We wanna be independent and lead our own images, and set our foot forward, and have stuff that sets us upon the excellence, our kids that are in the community and do things that others wanna do, whether it's play sports, whether it's working a project, whether it's go to school. We want you to be the ones that everyone else envies, so they wanna come here.
So if you look at the question, it's between the school board and the local community. I'll start with asking, what do we mean by community? Do we mean parents? Do we mean people that have no association with the school? Or do we mean people that have a problem with the school? So you first have to start with community. In general, now I think the board has very good transparency and good relationship with the community, but the challenge, here's the challenge. Outside of this room, there's about 65 to 70% of our community that are not directly plugged into the school, they don't have children here. Now, Arrowhead is unique in that it has a lot of outreach. You have teams that do a lot of things like fundraising, community events. Arrowhead is very well-known, it has a reputation, so that connection might be a little bit higher, but for general purposes, the community is divided between parents and then people who aren't connected. And so as a board, we have to continue to be open, available, transparent, and receptive to information. We have two ears, one mouth, talk less, listen more. And if you show people kindness, respect, people like to be heard, even if you disagree, if you're kind and you listen and people feel heard, it makes a difference. It reduces tension and stress. And so as a board member, I've done this from Hartland Lakeside, and I've done it from here, if people have a question, I will respond. If people have a comment, I will respond. And so what can the board do to be better? Be available, respond, be engaged, and don't limit it to just parents. Limit it to everyone. Involve the entire community, and I think that will improve the perception.
All right, so, to me, the one thing that I really thought about with this question was, how does the community choose to also engage with the school board? Because we do try to do many different things, if it's outreach, if it's people are invited to our meetings, if people are invited to come and speak. But again, a lot of people aren't always wanting to go through those channels. One of the policies that we actually put into place was transparency for parents to be able to log in to Skyward and log into our systems and see what are their students learning. That's something that I know I do, because I am a school board member, but I talk to other parents, and parents don't check in on that. They'll check in on their grades or get their report card, and it's really up to each person, how do they wanna engage back with the school and with the school board with that? A lot of times, people think of community engagement such as our sports, our theater, or extracurriculars, and that's a great way to engage with the school, but it also goes back to how do they engage about our academics and into other ways as well. And we continue, and we've got a great administration that works with our local businesses and organizations, but as I say, we can continue to always do more to engage with our community.
So, I currently view the relationship between the school board and community as dynamic, and I actually... And I actually appreciate the different perspectives of this question that Tony and Chris and Lynn shared. I didn't really look at it that way, and it's kind of nice to see that look. But I would continue to strengthen our bond by focusing on enhancing communication. Not only with just the board communicating through the superintendent to the staff and teachers, but then how we are leveraging that through different channels across our community. So whether it be establishing a Facebook presence or an Instagram presence, I think quarterly updates would be neat, although I'd have to check with policy to make sure that that is actually appropriate. I would actively invite community members to participate in school events and volunteer opportunities, boots on the ground, knocking on doors, getting to know your neighbors. It's actually kind of fun because you get to meet new people and you get to talk to them about what their interests are. And to Chris's point, actively listening. Love that two ears, one mouth philosophy. And then also, when I was running for, to be appointed for the board, there is a citizen advisory committee aligned to policy 9410, or I'm sorry, 9140. And I think that we have a lot of incredibly talented individuals within our community. And if we could create a diverse committee with all of that brain power, I think we could tap into some things that we've not really thought of before. And so that's a solution that I would bring and that I will actively pursue if I'm on the board this upcoming term.
Thank you. For our next question, we want to know how would you balance, or how do you balance the interests and needs of students, parents, and educators when making major decisions that impact the district? You have two minutes to respond, and we will begin with Mrs. Wood.
So our school district is extensive, encompassing a wide range of perspectives and opinions. And I'm committed to fostering open communication and actively seeking input from all of our stakeholders. I also encourage our community members, our students, our staff, our teachers, our administration to reach out and talk to us. Talk to me. I don't know what goes on in your head if you don't share your thoughts with me. So I will help pave the way to making your voice heard as well. Since my appointment in June, I have made significant decisions, including voting in favor of a referendum to go to ballot, thereby giving our community a voice to be heard. We have really great, helpful, robust information on our Arrowhead website that's factual, and I stand by that. And so I must say it has sparked quite some lively conversations. But it also has brought some much-needed attention to the school, whether it be positive or negative. And so I'm just glad that Arrowhead is back on the map and that people are seeing the good things that are coming out and where areas are of improvement. I believe our community engagement will be incredibly beneficial as we continue to move forward. And increased involvement from our community members at large would be great. So that's all I have to say to that.
All right. I feel like we do get quite a bit of various areas that we end up getting direction from. If it ends up being where our students or our staff is coming in and talking to us, so one of the things that we've added is in our curriculum meetings, we have different departments that come in and present to us what are they teaching the students. Recently, we started actually having great dialogues about different books and different subject matters, talking about how are they teaching in the classroom, such as how are we talking about learning how to think critically? So with these great conversations that we're having, by asking a lot of questions of our staff, we're able to be able to create different policies, which then really the administration goes through the procedures with it. Part of that is also, though, continuously to check in if those procedures are working, if the policies are coming through. So just like we talked about before with the cell phone policy, we have to go back and double-check if those are still the right policies and procedures that we need. And if not, that's part of our board, is to be able to do those reevaluations and making sure that we're having those type of interests and those balances in mind as we're going through that.
For me, students, students, students. So the question is, how do you balance the interests and needs? Students, students, students. So it's a tiered approach. You start with students. What is the decision doing for students? As a board, our job is to affect curriculum and outcomes. That's what we do. Policies, set up the culture, and then we have one employee, the superintendent. So it's a tiered approach. Students first. Second, parents. Parents are the students, the children's, first educators, and they have inherent rights to be involved in the major decisions that affect the district. So then you have the second step. And then third, educators. They're the experienced ones. I'm not running into a classroom trying to tell someone how to teach, absolutely not. The administration oversees it, provides recommendations to the board, and then we make decisions on policy and curriculum and how to execute on such recommendations. But the question, I think, gentlemen and ladies, is flawed. There's a missing group. There's also taxpayers. They are the ones that fund every decision that's made. And so everything has to be framed in a tiered approach. Students, parents, educators, with keeping in mind taxpayers. Because they are the ones that foot the bill for whatever these decisions are. So again, if you remember and step back, what is a board for? It is to affect student outcomes, policies for environment, and then people, the administration. So that's how I would balance the interests.
I think everybody else hit the nail on the head. One of the big things Chris pointed out is that's one of our big stakeholders. There's more people that aren't directly involved at the school that have kids or are parents of kids than there are residents who pay for the school. And a lot of these people sometimes want to know what their money's going for, what the outcomes are. Sometimes it's a quick conversation, sometimes they want more in-depth detail. It is the board's responsibility to ensure a lot of that is happening because a lot of those members of the committee don't have other ways to find out unless the school's made a press release or there's other events. So one of our roles is to be in the community and communicating while the positive things are happening that impact this school and being one of the ones that spread the word, just as the students do, just as the administrators do. And we have to be part of that group, sharing the collective word of Arrowhead and the goals that we have and the things we're trying to achieve and the directions we're taking.
You have one minute to respond to the rest of the questions. Our next question is, Arrowhead has made clear altercations to their curriculum to promote preparedness for standardized tests. What role should ACT scores have in curricular decisions? And how much should ACT scores be prioritized by students and educators? You have one minute to respond, and we will begin with Mr. Agno.
ACTs are very important. It's one of the standards now for your college admission. It's become a little bit more preferred in some areas than SAT. I can certainly speak from the fact that my ACT score got me admitted to the college I went to my junior year before Christmas. So they are very important. They're a big deal. We have to ensure the importance is understood and how to teach what's can, is able to be taught within a knowledge base that's on the test and make sure that our students are educated, make sure they're prepared. Because these tests can be very strenuous to the young that take them. And make sure that we give them all the advantage they can to feel comfortable and do the best they can on these exams.
For me, what role do they play in the decision-making? They're a metric. They are definitely an important metric, and it has to do with going on to college, so it's one metric. But we still have to focus on the fundamentals. How to think, critical thinking, and problem solving. Yes, making sure that there are ACT preparedness resources available or slight tweaks perhaps in the curriculum that could advance their performance. Great, that'd be awesome. But at the same time, if we're not focused on the basics and the fundamentals, that's a problem. Not everyone goes to college. The other thing to keep in mind is if you're focused on the basics, a natural outcome is a better ACT. If you teach to the test, we're doing you a disservice. We can't teach to the test. Our goal is to teach you to be prepared for life. And if we teach you those fundamental skills, you'll be prepared for life and you'll have a better ACT score.
All right, so as I say, from the standpoint of the, from standardized testing, one of the challenges that we continue to face is that scores kind of keep on changing. ACT has changed some of the things that they're looking at. The state continues to change what they're looking at on their report card. As a board, I think it's our responsibility to understand what those scores mean and how do we ask the right questions to know that we're teaching our kids the right materials as well as making sure that they're doing the best that they can to be able to be prepared for those exams. Because that'd be able to hold our administration responsible for making sure our kids are getting the right outcomes.
Yeah, so the DPI made this change in 2015, and I just can't wait to see what else the DPI is going to change because that's exciting and it really throws things for a loop. And so I think we really do need to focus on the basics. Can our students read? Can they write? Can they do math? And can they understand science? Our scores, it's no surprise, have continued to drop. And so I think that we need to really focus on making sure that our kids are learning so that they can take that piece, those pieces, those critical pieces into the world because there is life beyond high school. And we certainly hope that you can read and write informed sentences, which can be challenging for myself, but whatever. I also think I'm focusing on a balanced approach that values multiple learning experience, such as extracurricular activities, personal interests, and other coursework.
Okay. So our next question is, do you believe there's a lack of transparency between the school board and administration and the student body and parents? Do you believe change is needed to create more transparency? And what can be done to improve transparency and communication? You have one minute to respond to this question, and we're going to begin with Mrs. Wood.
I am, okay, thank you. Yes, so I believe that we can increase our communication transparency no matter what because there's always room for improvement. For the school board and the administration and the student body and parents, I, as a board member, am not quite sure how effectively the board is reaching the students and the parents. So I believe that we can come up with some creative ways to make that transparency feel better. I, so yeah, I say let's think of some solutions on how to bridge that gap because I think there is a lack.
I'm going to go back to one of my previous answers of saying, I think we're trying to work on that more than what was going on before I started on the board three years ago, since we did print some of these policies into place, such as being able to look in and stuff. I know it's helped me as a parent be able to ask questions to my kids' teachers and be able to ask also my kids what's going on sometimes before they even know that mom's checking in on them. And that's okay. To ask questions is where that transparency becomes more clear on what's going on because the more questions you ask about education both ways, both the board and the administration asking to the parents and vice versa, the parents and the students coming back and asking questions. That's how we build that community between us and be able to make us all stronger.
I'll address it directly. Do I think there's a problem or a lack? No. Do I think change is needed? Change is always good when it comes to transparency. We can always do better, like Lindsay said. So anything we can do to improve that would be helpful. But do I think there's a fundamental problem? No. In fact, in dealing with Conrad and the administration, I'm amazed at how much this guy communicates, at least to the board. Now, how that translates down to the community, different story. The board is a little bit removed from talking. So what can we do? What can we affect? We have to be available. We have to be responsive. And that's something I've said from the very moment that I got involved, and it's one of the reasons I got involved. I will respond to everyone. We have to be available. And if you treat people with kindness and respect, you will build a rapport that reduces the stress and improves the relationship. It's not just blast things. It's not email. It's not a billboard. It's relationship, it's courtesy, and communication.
That's definitely one of the biggest things, you know? Everybody communicates through different mediums nowadays. Years ago, there was only a few different mediums to get the news or the guns out in the world. Nowadays, everybody does it a different way. And sometimes the school struggles to communicate, even though they want to be transparent, and they are. The problem isn't what they're doing, it's just the problem is the people who need to receive it aren't always getting it. And that's not always the board's fault by any means. You know, because sometimes we aren't as promoted of our communications, and sometimes that hurts. And this is one of the bigger challenges because we live in a world that is nowhere near as black and white as communication was before. So we need to reinforce some strategies that we find that work and improve upon that.
So we have one last question before candidates are able to deliver their closing statements. That question is, bullying is often identified as a key issue among the student body. How would you look to address this as a member of the school board? You have one minute to respond to the question, and we will begin with Mr. Agno.
This is a big, big section. And what I mean by that is people get bullied for all different reasons. And sometimes all finding out the reason and the why, you can't fix the problems. Because kids can be mean, kids can be rude, kids can be think they're making jokes. But that doesn't mean the other person takes it as a joke. And sometimes getting to the root of those issues and seeing what the real issue is to solve the real issue can eliminate and affect a lot of the harassment and bullying that's usually brought forward by something else.
I wish I had five minutes for this one. I really do. A strong discipline policy is in place. We have good policies, but it's about accountability and enforcement. It really, and consistent accountability and enforcement. You have to have a positive environment. Again, kindness and inclusion, they're important, but accountability really helps set the stage. If we can create a positive environment where students, staff, parents, and community are held accountable for their actions and their words, we can create a better environment to reduce the amount of bullying. Again, the policies are in place. It has to be consistently applied, and people have to remain accountable. And we have to have parent engagement. We have to have parent engagement. Discipline and behavior starts at home. The school is not your parent. We enforce rules. We communicate those rules. But we have to bring in the family.
I'm going to echo a little bit what Chris said. We do have the policies in place. The procedures have to follow with it. Unfortunately, bullying does happen, and it happens at school sometimes. And it happens from what we understand more with social media and more outside of the school than it's actually happening here. So as I say, we can try to do as much as we can within these walls and have the conversations. But yet, there's a lot that happens outside of Arrowhead that we also can't police that one all the time.
I definitely echo Lynn and Chris and Tony. Bullying is a huge problem everywhere, and it has been for a very long time. We do have a very robust policy in place. But again, that's enforcing the policy and holding those that are bullying accountable with no tolerance. I also feel that if our culture within our school is good and people can treat each other with kindness and have that kind of respect for one another, that it can minimize bullying.
bullying. But again, to Lynn's point, it does happen outside of school, and so it's really up to families and, and the members of our community to really help promote anti-bullying through their rhetoric. So I, I just hope that one day we can all look at each other with a little bit more love.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much to our, our school board candidates for answering some of the questions that we have for them today. Each candidate will now be asked to deliver a closing statement. You will have one minute and thirty seconds, and we will begin with Mrs. Wood.
I just want to say thank you again for hosting this evening. Candidly, this is my first forum of such type, and so I hope I wasn't too much of a mess, but I do appreciate the questions that were put in place, because it really did make me sit back and think and look through what we currently have in place and think through ways that we can enhance and make our school better and our community stronger. And so again, thank you so much for the opportunity. Please don't forget to vote April first. It's so important to, to exercise that right, because that's where you can really use your voice. So thank you.
Thank you very much to the students for putting this on tonight. It was a great opportunity to be able to reflect a little bit on the last couple of years of serving and really be thankful to be able to give this time back to the community. I always say, for how many hours we spend at the school, I don't want to keep track one here, but I would like to just to know the amount of hours we do put in.
No, don't.
And it's really, to me, I look at it as it's actually just a blessing to be able to do this. My great grandfather served on our school board where I grew up, and he had an eighth grade graduation. He didn't go to high school. He thought education was one of the most important things that he could pass along to his family. So I have a little bit of a bloodline, I guess you could say, with family members serving on the school board, and I feel very lucky to be able to continue that here. And it makes me very proud to be able to say that I'm on the Arrowhead board.
Being here tonight is an absolute honor, so I echo that. And being able to communicate with students and community members, it really is a big deal. The work in the boardroom is only one aspect of what we do, and we have to interact, we have to listen before we talk. And so it's, it's a complete honor. And when you look at what school boards do, keep in mind the three main responsibilities. Outcomes, academic performance. Policy development and personnel, people are one employee, the administration. If we are putting good policies in place and we're recommending good curriculum and we have a good staff to execute on those, we can have a good community. We talk about bullying, we talk about funding, we talk about a whole lot of things tonight. And it's really important that the board and board members understand what their duties are. And it all starts from listening to the community, to the parents, to the students. And so I genuinely appreciate the time that we get to share our thoughts and interact. Because without that interaction, we're independent people up here making decisions based on our own framework. You don't want that. You want us doing what the community wants. And so I echo Lindsay, please vote on April first. We appreciate your support. It's a lot of work, but we do truly love it.
All right. Well, everybody here is a bit more experienced to speak for me than me about being on the school board. But that's certainly one of the things about the school board is it's a very interesting organization with a very critical and important mission. The guidance of the education of the kids, the direction of the school and its teachers, all very important missions that need to be focused on, on in and out. And they have highlighted, and one of the biggest things, we have to be approachable. We can't have the committee afraid to talk to us. We can't be afraid of them, give us a piece of our eye. Sometimes it's just that. Other times, there's important details that we may garner, they help us make decisions. We are an integral part of the community, and we need to promote that, and we need everybody to help promote that. We need people to not be afraid to talk to us, just as we need to not be afraid to talk to them.
Okay. So first and foremost, ROKA, the Social Studies Honor Society, would like to thank this year the school board candidates for attending our third annual school board forum. We really appreciate your insight on issues that both the students and community deem essential to the success of our school. We'd also like to thank all of those that attended the event tonight and showed your support to our initiative to foster civic engagement. Please remember to make your voices heard by voting on or before April first via absentee, early in-person, or in-person election day voting resources. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful rest of your night.